Well, last week I said David and Cass were incompetent for not knowing the time restraints on the Carol subdivision. I should have said they knew exactly what they were doing and let it purposely slide in. That should be investigated, along with David and Walt. David and Cass were demanding police to target me for my Facebook post. Last week Officer Cantrell over here went up to him and I said, "Where are you targeting me?" And he said it was because of my Facebook post. And I have a problem with that. Now who would I file grievances with if it's against the city attorney, city manager, and the PD? Who would I file it with?
Have to ask the city attorney.
Well, I have a problem with the city attorney one day. I bought the trailer, this trailer, a couple of years ago. He was fixing it up. I got a code violation because of that, having to see if it was there or not. Didn't know it tied up with ledger. Well then I asked for pictures, never got pictures. Well then they turned, I went on the Zoom meeting and he cut me off before it was my turn. And he put my property, about 900 feet away, on Roger's property. In my property, separate from Roger's, separate property. He put it over and said if Roger didn't do his yard, then I would get a violation. And that's not right from what I'm hearing. So I've had a lot of problems with David and Cass, and I hope you can make that.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mary. John Westbrook. John Westbrook. Who decided. Okay. Judge Chris Langford.
I know y'all probably knows, but I've been the judge out here for going on about seven years now. And we've always had the policy, of course, we follow the law in the court. And everybody who's ever come through this court, I've got a policy between everybody which is fairness, respect, and compassion. And I don't think anybody who set foot in here was saying different, although I could be wrong. And I was very surprised on Friday when I saw items T added to the council's agenda here. So I am just here to, one, learn about why that's been added to the agenda. And two, I'm available to answer and address any questions or concerns. Thank y'all.
Okay, there's no consent agenda. I had a conference with the city attorney and the first item, item A, is a... Not an open session, we'll have to go into executive session, so we'll adjourn to executive session at this time.
I want to make a motion to move items A, B, and C after all of Jennifer's items, so we can get through those.
All in favor? Motion carries. Would you repeat those, A, B, and C?
Yes. A, B, and C to be moved after all of Jennifer's. So I guess after item Z, as in Zebra.
Okay, item D, discussion and possible action regarding the procedure of obtaining supplied information to the city council by city employees and city officials.
I mean, am I addressing you with these questions, or how am I going to get my questions answered?
What do you...
What is...
I don't know what this item is for.
So what are the general rules as far as if one of us requests documentation or important information as far as receiving it back? What is the protocol at this time?
At this time, it's as mirrors just sending them an email or calling them or putting something in writing. And then the staff have always just gotten that document for that council.
Okay, and then what is the response time as far as that goes?
I don't know if the pass procedure has been, I don't know how long it's taken them to get things back. But I think that the general rule is if it's something simple and easy, it should get back to you pretty quickly. If it's a whole bunch of stuff, I can see why that would take longer. Or if it was something complicated, like they have to go print a huge map or something like that, it might take longer.
Okay.
In the council rules and procedures that have been strongly advocating for, you can write that in there and say, "Hey, it has to be within X number of days." And remember that city council members, when you're requesting those records, you have a little bit greater of a right than open records, right? It can be treated as a public information request. But it also can be, you guys can give higher protection to this than council members through this procedure. And if you wanted a shorter turnaround than the normal open records, then you can put that in your rules and procedures, get the council votes on it together.
Okay. The reason I ask is because for the last couple of weeks, I haven't even gotten any kind of response whatsoever, not even like, hey... Well, I mean, with you I have, but with city employees and officials, I haven't got any kind of response whatsoever on any of the items that I needed. Not even a, "Hey, I got it, I'm working on it." So I feel like there's some sort of something that needs to go in place on this. And for that reason, I'd like to put in a motion to have city employees and/or city officials respond and acknowledge to all requests, letting the council members know that they have received their response. The responsible party to supplement the submitted of, or excuse me, submittal of information shall send said information to council within five days of initial receipt. In emergency situations, there will be notifications sent with an explanation in place of the needed information.
Okay, what do they have to do in five days? They have to respond that, "Yes, we got yours," or they have to actually give you the information you requested in five days?
For the information that they're able to give us back, they have five days to send that back. But every email that we send to them needs to be acknowledged so that we're not sitting here wondering if they even got it or not.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Everybody understand? Yeah, all in favor? Motion carries. Now, I'd ask for some... Is this, if you send emails about one item to four or five different people, you expect each one of them to respond to you?
No, all I want is an acknowledgement, that way I know somebody has gotten it. This whole week I've sent emails and I do not even know that anybody got it because nobody responded with any kind of acknowledgement whatsoever.
Thank you.
Well, I think there might be something wrong with your email. Because I have to review their responses.
No, because I've been responding to Jessica just fine, and she's been responding back.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying, did Jessica respond with you?
Not on those particular items.
Okay, I have an email from her, let's... I think she's talking about...
I think we can discuss this after the council meeting. We need to move on to item E.
Discussion and possible action regarding the City of Godly handbook.
So we went over this a lot the other day. I put the discussion in case if anybody else wanted to discuss. So did anybody else have any questions regarding the handbook? If not, I'd like to put in a motion.
I think you hit the hammer on the head with all of yours.
Okay, so then I motion for an HR professional appointed by the council to create a new city handbook. Once this is received, it will be reviewed and finalized by council. All city employees shall follow all guidelines set in the current handbook created January 17, 2017, until the new handbook is adopted, including but not limited to the work schedule stated as Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and using time sheets to track time on a weekly basis.
I'll second that.
Now that includes completely changing the hours of operation at City Hall, right?
Yes.
Well, I don't think it's changing it, I think it's going back to what they signed.
Yeah, it's what's in the handbook, which would be something that should be doing now. Like, they should be doing it now, since the handbook was created after the fact of that deciding factor of Tuesday through Thursday, I mean Tuesday through Friday, excuse me.
I'm still trying to be clear on this.
Mm-hmm.
You want the city to go to five-day, eight-hour workdays instead of four 10-hour days?
Correct.
As it...
Possibly working hardship on people that can't get here by end of the day.
I mean, it's kind of the same thing as far as the city council meetings. I mean, you guys don't care that those are at 5:00, so I don't really understand where the confliction is.
It's not a conflict to me, I'm retired, I can come down here during the day. But there are people that cannot. That's what the advantage of the 10-hour day is. I just think that's a major change without much reason, but we have a motion.
What are the hours in the handbook? I forgot.
Monday through Friday, 8 to 5.
So an hour.
Do what?
So it's an hour difference per day, but they're open for five days a week.
Correct.
Instead of 8 to... Were they open now 9:00 or 8 to 6:00?
8 to 6:00, Tuesday through Friday. And I also did a poll where 80-plus percent voted for Monday through Friday and very few for the 8 to 6:00, Tuesday through Friday.
Was this random vote from citizens of Godly?
Yeah, it's a poll from citizens of Godly, yes.
Already seconded that.
Okay, I didn't hear that. Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item F, discussion and possible action regarding the utilization of the city website.
Do we know who maintains this right now?
They do not.
They do not, okay. You're just cameras, right?
No, I... I partner with a company that does that. I don't remember the name of the company you're currently using, but they're not specifically designed for city government websites. It's just kind of one of the things that that major corporation does.
Okay.
So I don't know the experience from a city staff point of view, kind of what it takes for them to do stuff like that.
Okay. Okay, well... I mean, I motion that all the city, or I motion that all times the city website shall be the main source of all city information, including but not limited to job openings, all up-to-date contact information, news and announcements, city council agendas, requests for permitting, vendor contracts, useful links, calendars, and all information found in the site links.
I'll second that.
I'd like to amend that a motion. And amend that motion to have it be done by end of business day Friday.
What was the motion?
To amend her motion on the floor. Like, to have it all done by the end of day Friday.
Are you saying on a regular course of business, or are you saying this Friday?
Have the city website updated by this Friday, and from now on, it's updated like it should be.
Okay, well, we don't have a practical way of doing that.
Would it be practical to have it done by January 1st of 2023, so we can start the year off correctly?
We'll need to figure out who the company is, and then we'll have to connect with them and give them documents ahead of, or the...
Okay.
And Jessica would have to take the lead on that, I think, and Jessica's away this whole...
Okay, so January 1st, does that sound reasonable?
That's fine with me.
Okay, so do I need to say my motion again, or...
I'll rescind my amendment.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding dates, times of city council meetings.
Anybody have any questions according to this?
I'd like to see us have, by ordinance, two meetings a month, and possibly move it to 6:00 or 6:30.
I definitely would want to move it at least to 6:00 myself. I work all over the place, and sometimes I have to leave work at 2:30 to get here on that day and have somebody else cover my job for me, so I would like to at least move it to 6:00.
Okay.
And I don't, as far as sitting, I don't know, do we need two meetings every month? That we'd have right now, my understanding is we have it a settlement on the 1st, and then if we're needed, we do it the 3rd. I'd like to, and I don't really want to say that in stone, we have to have two because we don't have anything to talk about.
We can put in there as needed, but I think it needs to be in the ordinance.
Yeah.
What we've done so far is we have two that are in our ordinance, the two Tuesday meetings, and then we use that second one only if needed. And the reason there's value in keeping it a regular meeting is that you don't have the quorum issues of being a special meeting like we've experienced recently, where you have to have a different set of quorum rules. But if you don't use the meeting, there's nothing wrong with not using it.
Okay, so then I motion the city council meets the first Tuesday every month at 6:30 p.m. And again, the third Tuesday every month at 6:30 p.m., if agenda permits.
So what makes us have or not have that second meeting?
If we have enough material for an agenda, then we have a meeting. If we don't, then we don't have a meeting.
So if we have an agenda item for that second meeting, we have a meeting, okay. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding employee time, cross of duties, records, schedules, et cetera. Cross of duties, is that a misprint or...
No. No. Cross of duties means that if one person does one thing, another person cannot do that thing due to conflict of interests. That is cross of duties. But we can't ask these questions because nobody's here to answer them. So, can, let's see. H.I.J. I think maybe H.I.J. needs to be moved to the next meeting because I have nobody here to answer the questions that I need answered.
Is H.I.J.?
Mm-hmm.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Since they're her items, she can move them. We don't have to have a vote.
Okay.
Did you agree?
Yes.
Okay. So, H.I.J. are not going to be acted on tonight?
Correct.
At but at the next time on the agenda.
Correct.
Discussion and possible action regarding potential job openings.
Okay.
So, do you want to list a section 551.074?
Mm-hmm. It's just the legality of it. Does anybody have any questions on this? If not, I'll place a motion.
What are you talking about?
Like, any, where, where is it? Discussing possible action regarding potential job openings. That's actually if any jobs are coming up, if any jobs are internally that people may be slipping into, all of those type things.
Is it that section, is what's in the handbook?
No, it's just in general. So, I'll just say my motion, and then if anybody has any questions, they can ask from there. So, I motion there shall be a hiring freeze internally and externally in all departments until further notice with the exception of the council approvals.
For what reason?
So that we can get everything up to date and the mess is cleaned up prior to other people coming on board.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the city and municipal inventory and how it is maintained. Inventory, clarify that.
Does any, like, have an inventory that tells you if it's retired, if it's inactive, or if it's active? And I had requested that, but I didn't receive it, so, I mean, there again, L, M, and N should probably go to the next meeting because there's nobody there to answer my questions.
On this municipal inventory, what are we talking about? The vehicle, are we talking about?
I'm talking about.
Equipment that the fire department, police department use, all that?
Entire inventory log, like, everything that the city owns should be on an inventory list. Assets, buildings, lands, I mean, all of those are assets. We have capital assets, we have regular assets. Everything should be listed in inventory, and it should have a status of that inventory. And, I mean, I had asked for that report, and if it was created, then that report should have been easy to maintain, but I never received it. I mean, because when it comes to city entities, it's supposed to be a process to where you retrieve or you receive an asset. That asset goes into a list. Once that asset is retired, it then goes to this list, and then you either auction it off or something, and then that will show you what happened to that asset at that time. So, if we've never retired anything, or if we've never auctioned anything off, essentially, everything that the city has purchased should be in this inventory list. And then if we have auctioned off, then there is a journal entry that should have been made showing where that money went to in our budget.
Okay, that's a good idea. So, you want to table L, M, and whatever, or you want to go ahead and vote on L?
So, L, M, and N, I need more information, and there's nobody here to answer, so there's not really much to do with that.
Okay.
I do think that's something that needs to be provided to her tomorrow. Should be pretty easy if it's okay.
If it's not done, that's fine. Just say, hey, we haven't done this, so we need to start doing it.
There needs to be accountability if you're not looking to, that's a long one. That's every asset, that's every piece of equipment, that's every tool this thing has. Major equipment, vehicles, specialty tools, guns, ammo, that if this city doesn't have it on record of what we own, we got big problems.
So, are you saying we don't have it?
If we don't have it.
Yeah.
If. Why isn't it been produced? It should be in an Excel spreadsheet. Someone should be able to rip it down and send it to the council.
I believe Wednesday I asked for it. Yeah.
I think you sent that email on Wednesday morning, right?
Right.
Did you get a response at all from anybody in the city on that one?
No. Cass is the only one that's been responding to me, and he's been responding rather quickly, so.
And I will tell you that under TML, risk or insurance that we have, which protects the city in any high-fuel situation, they also keep an inventory for purposes of all the major equipment. I doubt that the TML has for small items, right? But I'm sure that they have a list of, like, vehicles, anything that could be a dispendable item, so you have to keep a manifest of that for TML. So, it does exist, it's a matter of.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Cass, so, L, M, and N are?
Did you all table those?
Yeah, I'm going to table them.
Cass, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On item Oscar.
Yes, sir.
Can we do that in open session, or does that need to be in executive session?
Discussing possible action regarding the city of Mr. Wallace. Yeah, he hasn't requested to be in open session, so that's the only way to reach for open session. So, it needs to be in executive session.
Okay.
Do we have other executive session items, or?
Yes, we do.
Probably P, right? P would be, or no?
No.
No. Oh, okay, okay. So, do we want to do all?
No, which ones, which ones do you have?
Both mine have to be done in executive session.
That was A, B, and C, wasn't it?
Yes, specifically, B and C have to be done.
Basically, the way that he justified people are out of order or not.
You said people in, citizens, cast members?
Cool, because there was some conflicting situations at the last meeting where I felt there were some biased feelings going on. And so, I just wanted to clarify what was just and what wasn't just, so.
Okay, but that's not executive session, right? Okay. So, the choices are to go in executive session now and handle those items and come back, or do the other items that are open and then go in executive session. You guys can call that. I would not advise we go in executive session, come back, and then go back and go back.
Right.
Have you looked at the remaining items to see if there's any of those that?
Yeah, I don't see any of the rest of Councilman Thompson's that are executive, right?
Mm-mm, I don't think so.
And then we put Councilman Taples's at the very, and then those two, he's saying he wants an executive session.
Okay.
And, I mean, honestly, some of these that I have on here, I can't discuss because there's nobody to discuss them with.
So, where are we at right now?
Are we, are we going to go into executive, or are we going to go ahead and do the rest of these before?
Do the rest that we can do, and then go into executive session with what we can't do out here.
Would you look at, would you give me your opinion on item Q?
I don't know that's, is that the hierarchy? Do you have a candidate?
Not.
Okay, then it wouldn't be executive session.
Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding the hiring of a new police chief and that position.
Okay, so, I think we are at a point where time is of the essence, and we need to get that position filled ASAP. I feel like we need to create a deadline. I know Cass gave us some examples and guidelines to go off of as far as criteria of what our new chief should hold. So, I feel like we need to get that put on the website to post that job and start accepting applications ASAP.
Have we, we possibly have already? What? Oh. Have we started searching for a new chief of police?
No, because that was because the last meeting, we didn't know if that's what the council wanted to do. Councilman Thompson is advocating that we do that now.
Okay.
And I think the discussion at the last meeting, I don't remember exactly, but you guys had said that we need to advertise it more in one place, having it on the website, having it on social media, having it on, so now all these different other sites, try to get it out there.
I think we're going to have to do that in order to.
I've actually been reaching out to local Class A police departments, and I've retrieved multiple different criteria as far as what a chief of police should have as far as capabilities, I mean, knowledge, skills, all that good stuff, education and experience, certificates and licensing. So, I think ours actually needs to be updated. And the reason for my budgetary questions were because I think the police department needs a revision on their budget. I don't think that their budget is where it needs to be. And so, for that reason, I feel like it needs to be amended. But we can't amend it until we decipher on what we're going to pay the chief of police, what we are going to require the chief of police to have, because if we require the chief of police to have higher credentials, then obviously, he's going to need a higher pay.
I agree.
Yeah. So, I mean, in order to get the correct candidate, we need to really give them something to come here and get. So, because right now, we're, I mean, if you want the bottom of the barrel, you're going to have the credentials that we have. So, I just feel like that needs to be revised, but we need to put a timeline on it because we need to get somebody in ASAP to take care of the things that are going on right now.
Yeah, I think the plans that have been discussed, I haven't been privy to all of them, but I've been involved, sitting in there with some of them, was to normally you appoint an interim chief so that you have someone doing those duties while you're looking, because it's going to take a while to get the candidate, field of candidates for you to make a decision.
Right, but that interim isn't up to the level of standards that we need it to be, so I'm sure that there are things getting through the cracks. That's why I'm saying that we need to get it posted, we need to get candidates, we need to get the interviews taken care of. But before we can do that, we need to revise our field of the whole description and then the requirements. So, is there any way that you guys can take a few minutes of your day, look through job descriptions, requirements, maybe do a little research on your own? And then, how would we do that? We would pitch it all to you, or how do we?
I would say Jessica, because she's going to be the one to post all the job openings.
Okay.
And she's also going to be the one to put it on the website, on her Facebook, all that good stuff. But if the council wants to approve a final version, then you can send those all to her, and then staff would finalize it and send it out to you guys for approval. But I will reiterate that it's a smart choice to do it quickly. December's already kind of a loss, right? So, even the January meeting, you're not going to have candidates for, so we're looking at February, the earliest that the interviews will be done. And that's if, oh, that's if the candidates actually fly.
Correct.
Yes, I think we need to be looking for candidates right now.
Yeah.
And we may be. It may be out there. But it may not be on the proper website.
The easiest way to do is if any council member has something that they want added to it, I think that it needs to have included. They can send that to Jessica, right? She can compile it, but I think we wait till the next month's meeting to approve the job posting.
Correct. I think we need to post it ASAP. So, I put a motion.
If you have something to add, you can definitely send it to her, but I think that internally, staff should have the ability to post a job.
Okay, so, do you guys think that you can get your credentials in by next Friday?
So, my only concern is you're going to have five people submitting five different wants for their credentials. How is Jessica supposed to go through and pick which?
Well, whenever you're posting a job, it's best for the council, since you guys are the hiring body, to let us know what you guys want. For instance, you guys could say, we want to have a chief that has that prior chief experience, or we want to have a chief that has been through, and they're not supposed to be internal. Whatever those requirements make, you guys need to make a motion and support those and give us those parameters. That way, you don't have the problem of each council member wanting something different. And I would say with that also, to give us some kind of salary range so that we know what number.
So, do we have to actually make a motion for that job posting to happen?
I'm sorry?
Do we have to make a motion in order for that job posting to happen?
Yes, like I just said, having those details matters about what you're looking for. And then there needs to be agreement of the council members as to what that person will look like.
So, we don't have it posted already yet?
No, sir.
Okay, so your motion is to?
For instance, if you look at what was sent out earlier today, some departments require 10 years of experience as a mentor, right? And then they require a certain number of years for, you know, supervisor-type duties as experience. All of those need to be helpful for us to find a new mentor.
Okay. So, then I will place a motion to have everybody's collaboration of acknowledgement and skills to Jessica by Friday, and the posting to be posted on the city website by the following Friday. Am I correct?
Now, will Jessica be back by Friday?
No.
No, she won't be back.
She won't be back till Monday. But we can still send our stuff to her.
Right, we can. Okay, so you want it submitted by Friday?
Yeah, so, all of our collaboration of skills and requirements to Jessica by Friday, and then the job posting. and then the job posting by the following Friday.
Everybody understand that?
Yep.
All in favor?
I still think we're gonna have to decide those postings now. 'Cause if you say 10 years, and I say five years, and he says seven years, I mean, I'm pretty sure you've done the research.
Yeah, I have it all here.
Um, why don't we go through and decide that right now instead of waiting?
So then I'll retract my motion. Um, okay, so do you want to start with education and experience?
Do we have a copy of that?
No, can we make copies?
No.
No, okay. So required education and experience must have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, police science, public administrator, or administration, business administration, or another related field. Uh, must have a minimum of 10 years of experience in law enforcement with at least five years of command experience. An equivalent combination of education and experience may be substituted for some of the above. Required certificates and licenses, a valid Class C driver's license, uh, advanced peace officer certification issued by Texas Commission on Law Enforcement Officer Standards and Education, uh, preferred education certificates, license, and experience, a master's degree in an applicable field of study, master, master peace officer certification issued by TICLOS. And then it lists a whole shaloo of, um, physical demands. And then also it gives a description of the job duty, and then the necessary knowledge and skills and abilities. So you have to have the knowledge of principles, practices, and procedures of public safety administration, organization, and operation, principles, practices, and procedures of crime prevention, law enforcement, traffic control, patrol services, code enforcement, and property and evidence maintenance, federal, state, and local policies, procedures, laws, and regulations, principles and practices of public organizations and management in a municipal government environment, principles and practices of supervision, training, performance evaluation, and personal management, specialized firearms and communications equipment, principles and practices of multiple budget preparation and administration. And I feel like that one's very important. Uh, principles and practices of financial reporting, uh, principles and practices for developing goals, objectives, and management plans, uh, principles, practices, and procedures of public information management, public relations, and media relations. And then skills ability to develop and administer departmental strategic plans, goals, and objectives that incorporate the strategic plans, goals, and objectives established for the city by the city council. Uh, select, train, supervise, and evaluate department personnel. Plan, organize, coordinate, and administer the activities of the department in a manner conducive to motivation, full performance, and high morale. Lead and develop skills in others, maintain professionalism, approaching others with tact, reacting well under pressure, treating others with respect, accepting responsibility for one, one's own actions, and following through on commitments. Identify and respond to public and city council issues and concerns in conjunction with the city administration. Uh, utilize high lever, level skills, constantly evaluating and looking for ways to improve operations and service. Manage change effectively, developing workable implementation plans, communicating changes, overcoming resistance, supporting those affected by change, monitoring transition, and evaluating results. Analyze data and information, draw conclusions, and propose responsive actions. Analyze product, problems, identify alternative solutions, project consequences of proposed action, and implement recommendation in support of the city and departmental goals. Uh, prepare clear and concise administrative statistical and financial reports. Calculate figures and amounts, apply concepts such as fractions, percentage ratios, and proportion to practical situations. Prepare and administer a departmental budget. Interpret, apply federal, state, and local laws regarding regulations and policies. Read at a college level so as to comprehend laws, ordinance, and regulations. Sounds good?
Sounds like City of Fort Worth or Dallas to me.
Well, actually, it's City of Hudson Oaks, which is also a Class A, so it's kind of relatively the same size.
Sounds like someone has their HR personnel in mind.
So, and the job, or the brief description of the job is administers and directs operations and activities of the, well, theirs is Hudson Oaks. Police department develops and implements departmental plans, policies, and procedures, manages departmental resources through a planned budget, interacts cooperative, uh, with other city departments, represents the city to outside agencies, organizations, and to the general public, supervises assigned police department personnel. And if you do a side-by-side comparison of Hudson Oaks and Willow Parks, they're relatively the same.
So what's the pay for?
So with benefits, which is a decent fraction, um, you're looking at, uh, I believe it was like eighty-two thousand and some change. I asked for their budgetary information as well, and he sent it to me, but I forgot to print it out. So if you give me just one second, I can read that to you as well.
So the eighty-two thousand included benefits, or did not?
It did.
It did, okay.
Even though we voted last week to keep ours down?
Okay, so, um, so, actually provide them to first, okay, so eighty-one thousand a year with salary in French. Um, and would actually provide them 24/7, which is six thousand five hundred and fifty-two hours. Uh, two thousand one hundred eighty-four, uh, not the six thousand that they are quoted. I don't know what that is. Oh, and that's what, that's what all uniforms and equipment is. Like the radio, weapons, body cam, et cetera. Um, and then also the regular officers would be sixty-three thousand with benefits in French.
And what about the benefits?
The benefits are, um, different because we don't know what, this is a budgetary question.
What I meant, like retirement?
No, all of that stuff is, well, that's a whole totally different ballgame. The retirement's separate. Um, benefits include your medical, your, um, leg safe.
Dental.
Yes.
Yeah, your TMRS is taking up your check.
Right, so that's a whole nother beast. But again, these are all budgetary questions we can't have answered. So I don't know even where we are in our budget as far as what our officers are making. Because I requested that report as well, and I never got it.
Eighty-two thousand for what you read off of the college and the experience and stuff, to me, that would be the bottom level that the entry, that'd be the, that seems low to me for what a police chief is doing, all that would, would require.
Yeah, and keep in mind, eighty-two thousand is not take-home pay. It's included with benefits. So take-home pay, if, if justifications are where you think they are, then that would put them probably around the sixty-five, sixty-eight range, and that's just a guesstimate.
What's in our budget for a police chief?
I have no idea.
No, either.
We don't have.
Probably wanted to test the water and see what was gonna take to hire one.
I don't think, personally, I think that's too low.
Well, and that's why we need the justifications as far as the budgets go. And I think that we need to do a reevaluation of all, all, um, budget lines. Because if our, I need to see pivot tables, spreadsheets, all that good stuff so that I can see if the lines that actually have money in them are justified to where they need to be according to that allocations that are allocated for. Does that make sense?
No, I don't do it at all.
Okay, okay, okay. So let's just say that our, our budget starts with, um, like the general budget. General budget's like the whole nest egg, and then it gets divided into separate sections. So when those separate sections get allocated that money, then that money is allocated for certain particular things. And then once that money's spent, if you still have money in your, uh, general fund, then you can actually make a journal entry and move that money to another fund.
Through a process of budget amendments.
Correct.
So I can't say these numbers out loud because they were privileged information, but there is the police department.
So, yeah, so we're on the lower end of it. So making these changes would actually increase the, would need an increase on the budget side. But we.
Councilman, can you move your mic?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
So we would need an increase on the budget side of things. However, I don't feel like we should just, like, throw it all out there all at once. We need to figure out in where our city's growing. So if we go and we make the justification of, okay, we can pay this officer, say, sixty-seven, or this chief, excuse me, sixty-seven thousand dollars a year, we could actually create some sort of contract stating that, okay, after your contract is up, then we can reevaluate based on the revenues that the department is coming in, that has coming in. So, I mean, just because we hire somebody in like that doesn't mean we have to keep them at that particular pay range. And we can notate stating that there would be possible, um, I guess, I don't know what the word is, but possible chances of an increase in pay after X amount of time.
So you're talking about longevity pay?
No, not necessarily. I'm just stating, like, once he gets in, he proves himself, and he can do the job, he's doing the job that we ask him to do, then we can make a, an evaluation that goes in his file, which gives him the, which gives him the opportunity for that pay raise.
So we're ruling out any hers?
Yeah, and I mean, and too, if you come in and bring somebody at a certain pay range, and you put them on a probationary period, during that probationary period, if you, for whatever reason, do not agree with the way that he's doing things, or do not like the way he's doing things, correct me if I'm wrong, you're allowed to terminate him and redo the process.
If you want your police chief to be an actual employee, yes.
Okay.
Uh, it's gonna be difficult to hire a police chief, appointing some police chief to leave another job to be a probationary, actual employee.
Okay, well, that makes sense.
And also highly, highly advise against tying somebody's employment to what you said is revenue of the department. Uh, department, the amount of money it makes in tickets has nothing to do with the success of the department.
Correct, but if we don't have revenue, we can't pay.
Well, unfortunately, I, I highly again will advise from a legal standpoint that the person's employment would sit in top contingent on the revenue of this department in terms of citations.
No, not citations at all, no.
I'm sorry?
No, we can't base anything off of the revenue.
When you say revenue, that's what revenue is.
Correct, but, I mean, is that our only source of reven, revenue for the police station?
Um, a police department is a service, just like we provide other services like fire. Fire doesn't make any money, but it's something that we as a government have to provide to the community. The police are the same way. It has nothing to do with money or revenue. We, we pay for it because it provides a service to the citizens.
Correct.
That's what government is. But it's not, it's not a, a money collection situation, just like the fire department is, just like public works. Um, they go out and fix pipes, and they go out and turn water meters on. They're not making money. It's a service to the community, it's government.
So do we know why there are certain allocations made as far as where the money is justified? So is our fire department and our police station or police department, are they equal? Or does the police department have more, or does the fire department have more?
You keep asking me number questions, um, and I don't know the answer to that. Um, I will tell you that there are different dynamics. Um, our fire department, um, is partly funded through another governmental entity.
Correct.
And because it's funded by a different governmental entity, it's not like our police department at all, right? It wouldn't surprise me if we spend more money on police than fire, because we're getting a chunk of money from another governmental entity to pay for our fire, if that makes sense.
Right, but do we go out and acquire as many grants as we do for the fire for the police department?
Again, I don't.
See?
I, I, I can't tell you, but I will, I will tell you that the, the departments are apples and oranges, right? Fire services is totally different than police. There are gonna be some years that police is gonna need a ton of resources. Say that they have an outbreak in this, like theft crimes, and they have to, they have to go and do a bunch of work that's not gonna let them be in the office, and they have to go hire outside companies to do testing, things like that.
Yeah.
Changes in law affect police department budgets, like several years ago, uh, they changed the law for marijuana in Texas, and they changed the definition of what marijuana, marijuana is, and they said it had to have point oh three percent THC, which required a six hundred dollar lab test for every marijuana case. Well, a lot of departments, um, suddenly their budgets went boom, right? Um, fire's the same way. There's all of these rigorous work compliance things that fire, they have to maintain certain standards, and it costs money to do that. Um, it's all things that are driven by external sources, not internal resources. If that makes any.
Right, and that's, I mean, when he said we needed a budget workshop, I'd agree with that because that way we can see the allocations that are made as far as the budget goes. And then that way we can appropriate.
As to the police chief or with this agenda items about, um, what I think is smart, council, is you don't have to come up with a number of what you want to pay today, but what you do have to come up with and give staff authorization is what to advertise. Remember that once you have that candidate, you will negotiate that pay with that specific candidate at the right time.
Based on qualifications?
Correct, right. If the candidate comes in and they're phenomenal, and you guys really want them, you would go do the budget amendment to make that happen, right? Um, but right now, all, all that I'm recommending is that you guys not pick that number right now if you don't have a candidate in front of you. Uh, it's instead to give a range so that when you advertise the job, a lot of people nowadays won't apply for a job if there's no number range there.
So how do we pick that number when we don't know what's in the budget right now? Because if.
It's a range, you're guessing. It's a range, you're guessing. And remember, you're not committing to that number, you're not saying, "We're gonna pay with the top range," or you're not saying you're gonna pay with the bottom range, you're just saying that that is the range of consideration.
Okay.
But a lot of folks do not apply for jobs if they don't see that, they're not gonna go through the whole process or, you know, spend the time or energy if they have no idea what the range is.
Okay.
I'm gonna say go with what all you read. I wrote down most of it, but, and starting at eighty thousand.
Are you making a motion?
I'm still discussing.
Now, is that with, with benefits and French, or is that just pay alone?
With benefits.
Okay, so benefits and French.
But it's just starting at. We're gonna decide a number at a later date whenever we hire them.
Do you have a low, like a low where you don't want to go as far as minimum goes?
That is my.
That's what he said, eighty thousand.
Be the, be the bottom.
Geez, that's high.
You have to put a high in there, can you start, starting at, or do you, I mean? I wouldn't, I don't apply if I don't have a point to appoint myself. I skip those people. I'd go from eighty thousand to a hundred thousand, uh, eighty thousand to a hundred thousand high range.
On the thing that Cass sent out this afternoon, it says pay range seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand annually, depending on qualifications.
That was a placeholder, that was a placeholder that I had on there. That's, that's correct, that's why I said draft on it.
Right.
We need those numbers from you guys.
So do we need to state benefits and French?
I don't know what that means.
Like, it's salary in French, excuse me. So salary, French means salary, benefits included. Like their benefits, the amount that it costs to, um, purchase their benefits?
All that we ask is that you be able to put, uh, some kind of salary range in the advertisement that we're gonna have.
Roger, do you want to make a?
Roger, do you want to make a-
I make the motion.
We go with what her recommendations and my salary range would be from eighty to, eighty thousand to a hundred thousand.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Motion carries. Discussion and discuss and possible action regarding the SRO program. Now, as far as I know, do we have a SRO program set by the school? They can get their own, they can form their own police department, you know that, right?
Well, I thought we had agreed that we were going to go into partnership with them.
We had agreed that we would help them out until they decided what they wanted to do. We would supplement their SRO program.
I think we entered into a formal agreement with them to provide services.
Did we?
Yes.
Yeah, as far as I know.
And then, well, that's before, was there, but then he moved on, he's now the chief and revises, and so I think we just need to fill that position, and I think there are other positions to fill, right? They have been filled. But we had an existing agreement with the school district to provide us services.
Okay.
We did, we had to look for fingerprints coming in before we-
I congratulated him yesterday at church, and he said he wasn't aware.
He, he's gonna get hired, but as, I will tell you now, in July, the school district, he's gonna have their own ISD police.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So are we not doing the SRO program at all?
We're gonna finish up semester with our contract, and Mr. Quinteros is most likely gonna be the police chief for ISD police.
Ah.
And that's-
And you said July?
They're looking for July.
Oh, fantastic.
And that's where I thought it was. I thought we made a temporary agreement to help the school out with SRO, so that they don't get in the bind, but that they were looking at forming their own police department, which is their, right?
Is there anything else to discuss on that?
No, not if it's up in July, I mean.
So what are we doing until July? You said January ninth?
January ninth, Mr. Quinteros will be there, and, officer, once the school year's over, he'll become the police chief, and that's right, please. We'll just let it go.
Who told you that information?
Uh, it would be through David Wallace.
For the, for the school district to go with the ISD police, that has to be approved in the school board meeting. I attend every single school board meeting, except for tonight, if that's not on the agenda. That's not just some decision that can just be made. There is an MOU right now with Godley PD, I don't know how they can form their own ISD police without a formal M.O.U. through their school board.
Like, I feel like that was a rumor, maybe privileged information, that we should-
It's what I'm being told, by David Wallace, and he's talking about deer. I've asked him to come up here and talk to y'all about it, but I've been in discussions with him, when we were talking to Mr. Quintero, Mr. Quintero, and that's the route they're wanting to go. And then, as it says, wouldn't like to, they will start with July.
So is there any way we could get that on the agenda for the next meeting, and maybe had deer here as well?
So table it's the next meeting?
Table it's the next meeting. Yeah, we were basing things on facts and not assumptions.
So while we're talking about facts, explain the process of officers going up there and checking how often-
They, they ship officers supposed to go up there at least three times a shift. They go up there, check the doors, doors are supposed to be locked, and they're supposed to be going there at lunchtimes, and walking around as well.
Which would seem to be what they want.
As of right now, that's what we do.
Yeah.
How many officers do you have on the ship?
We have one officer per ship, that's days and nights.
One officer per ship, so we're utilizing a police officer that's handling the community, we're taking them over to ISD three times a day?
They're supposed to go up two to three times a day. Yes, sir.
So utilizing regular patrol officers, does that violate our MOU, since they're not SROs?
I haven't checked it out, I couldn't, foretell ya.
I don't believe it does. I know when I was chief and going to training every two years, there were a lot of guys there that were chiefs of schools, and there were others that had officers that were trained SROs. The city of Fort Worth had one of those, had police officers in schools thirty years ago. It's just how you work everything out, how the school wants to do it. I've always said that we needed SROs in schools, but they need to be SROs because it's a completely different job. The school is in charge of everything, the SRO is just there to back them up. So our officers going out and checking doors, that's great, because that's one of the places that have caused some really bad issues at schools in the not-too-distant past, is nobody was checking those doors, make sure they were locked. But I think-
So, he's not hired till January ninth? I don't keep up with my kids' schedules, but I figured they probably go back before then, that means Silo Mills is gonna be opened. They do go back to ninth?
That's probably the reason for their start date.
Are we for sure on the ninth? Like, everything will be back?
Sure, we sent it off last week.
Okay.
I guess we'll wait till next meeting and have everybody here.
Discuss the possible action regarding violations made by city officials or city employees.
So, I, do you guys have anything to say on this one? If not, I mean, this one I feel like can be tabled as well, because the people we need to talk to are not here.
Okay, so you wish to table that?
Mm-hmm.
Discussion and possible action regarding internal comprehensive investigation by a third party, which the council will appoint concerning our courts department and all financials and human resource information.
I assume this comes from last meeting and the handbook and going over budgets and such?
Correct. So with all of the information that I have, I guess, acquired, there's too many conflicting things going on, so that creates a huge gray area for me. I feel like the transparency should be black and white when it comes to citizens requesting information, requesting to know where their tax dollars are spent. Also, as far as some of these things that are listed in here, I'm trying to choose my words, so it's kinda slow. A lot of it comes from this blue folder, a lot of it comes from some of the, the statements that have been told. So I feel like at this point, the only way that we can have true clarity is to bring a third party in, do the investigation. If it doesn't come out with anything that has been done, then perfect. But however, if it comes out the other opposite way, then I feel like there's something that needs to be done, and somebody needs to be held accountable for the things that may or may not come from it. And I mean, we are growing, we need to get ahead of that growth, and the only way that we're going to do it is to wipe the slate clean as far as all of this he said, she said, and this happened, and that happened type thing. The only way we can do that is to actually have somebody else come in, do the investigation, tell us, hey, this is what's going on, this is not what's going on, this is what we need to do to fix it. Initially, it had four points, it's like, who are we, where are we going, what are we doing, and how are we, or, excuse me, what are our goals, and how are we going to reach them? And I feel like this is the first step.
So what do you mean by a third party? Obviously not internal, but-
Yeah, an external person, so, I mean, there are multiple agencies that we can go out and hire to come in and do a full comprehensive investigation, and then give us a report, and then that's when we'll find out, you know, what is or is not happening from within.
So what type of budget do you foresee for them to do that?
I mean, Cass, didn't you give us the number the other day?
I, I'm not really sure what the scope is, what you're asking for, so I can't really ballpark it.
Okay.
If, if your question is that, you know, 'cause I thought this was about court, but I'm reading now, and I think it may not be about court. Am I wrong about that?
It's not like court directly, it's internally as far as the financials, the human resources.
So when you refer to financials, you're talking about the city's financials, not the court's financials?
Correct.
And you're, when you say human resource equation, you're not talking about the courts, you're talking about the cities?
Correct.
Okay, all right, in that regard, then, that's a, you're essentially saying you'd like to do an audit, for which we already do. I don't know how much the audit costs, though. Do you know, Mary, how much it costs?
Uh, probably pretty expensive, I don't know which-
I have no idea.
I don't know which, uh-
I, I can't even tell you how much that would cost, because what they do on an annual basis is they go in and they do an audit, and the audit consists of the auditor going and pulling various files in the court, or in the county system, et cetera, and then they look at it, and they go track all the dollars, they go track all the files, all that stuff. And then they come back and they tell us whether their audit created the issues, like if they found problems or issues. They also go and look at various practices for how things are accounted for, and even if they don't find an issue, but they find a policy that they think is dangerous, might mean it could lead, possibly could lead to that, they identify those as well. And then they come back once a year with a report on that, it's required by law, and we do this once a year for the government, and our auditors, it takes quite a while to do the audit, but they come back every year and give a report to you guys, and I, I, I never listen to any of their report, because it's-
And I have no idea who our auditors are currently.
And I don't remember, so yeah.
So, but I would actually like a separate third party that is-
They are a third party.
They're, they're a third party, they're not our employees or our contractors, they, they're a third party that does that, it's required by state law.
Okay.
And they give us a clean bill of health, and they also each year give us recommendations on stuff they want us to work on. Like, I think several years ago, they told us to work on our, our debt, like to reduce that number, and we did, we bought a couple of those bonds and brought that down, and sort of gave us a clean bill of health up and that. But they audit the entire city, it's not something that's just, like, they do utility building, they do permitting, they do all the financials, they do the court, all of that's part of that audit. Now, to hire somebody, but again, we can go have another audit this year, I mean, if we wanna do a second one, but it's very costly.
Do you know when the audits take place?
That's a good question, I don't know when we, Jane, do you remember? 'Cause I think they come like in January or something, don't they, or?
Well, we're on a different calendar, we're not on the, so I don't know if it's the end of fiscal year.
So your fiscal year ends at nine thirty? They don't, okay.
Yeah, it's different, they're not, they're not auditing the budget to see where, where we're doing a good job with our budget, they're looking at the financial liabilities the city's creating.
Is there any way we can, the city administration can mail us, email us the last two audits, so we can then look at those and see if there's anything else we're missing that we might wanna add to, to the audit?
Yeah, it's incredibly boring, but it's, it was like a packet I didn't even share, I think you guys got it in the last one, don't they? I never read it, it's literally that boring, but, and then the little guy talks about it, it's just terribly boring.
Right, 'cause we have to pull those audits for work whenever I have to give grant money out, so I know exactly how that verbiage is.
Now, in terms of, in terms of an audit, one of the cool things is the city of Godley, we, we don't have paper files for a lot of stuff, it's, it's all in INCODE for all the building processes. INCODE itself has internal audits that are set up, so that, for instance, say a staff keeper was taking cash from somebody, and then the cash didn't ever show up where it was supposed to, you know, they're pocketing that money, it would catch that. It's designed for that purpose. We don't, we, we don't do like a lot of cities do, where it's all paper and the files could be moving and everything.
So in-
It's all soft work.
In that type of audit, do they identify any allocations for any funds that are misappropriated?
What does that mean?
So like, say for instance, you have a budget, and you have those actual projects, per se, and then you-
Oh, you're saying like if, if money was in this account, and it was for this purpose, and then the city actually used it for something else and did not do a budget amendment? Yes, absolutely.
And then what about this whole creating a line type thing? I mean, 'cause this past, this past meeting, I had asked if we had any budget money for council to do any schooling, and he's like, oh yeah, we'll just create a line. Well, you can't just create a line, there's a process that has to take place so that you can create an account, you have to create an account, and then you have to appropriate that money in that account.
Well, I think what the reference stat was, I think there was money in the budget, or there was a line, and it just had zero dollars in it, right?
No, we don't have a budget for that, we don't have any-
I thought that was a big subject.
No, he said we didn't have a budget for that kind of thing.
There's zero budget for it?
I don't think there was any money in there, I think there was something in there. Like, there's, there's an actual number that's associated with it. All the budget stuff has a little, like, line, it has a number.
Right, that's an account number.
Yeah, so you're saying that there's no, there's no way to create an account, I would, I would say that's incorrect, I'm sure there's a way to create an account.
Oh, no, you can create accounts, but, I mean, all-
I think that's what he was saying when he was saying a line, he was saying a line account for that purpose, because-
Now, to the, to the discussion of having another audit, that's absolutely, there's no prohibition, there's nothing that's in the law that says you can't have multiple audits in a year. If you're talking about something different than that, if you're saying, hey, I wanna have people go in and scrutinize this specific issue, and you give a scope of that, I think that would control costs, right? But if it's just a, you know, we want somebody to come in, a third party, and just, you know, review everything and say, that's gonna be a very costly endeavor, if you don't give any kind of scope to it.
Okay.
But if it's financially based, if your concern is that money is missing somewhere, that's the auditor's job, and they've already done that.
Okay.
Every year.
Yeah, and that's, if I say law for a reason, because, you know, you ask accountability. It's also for state law for the reason, and that sounds terrible, but the state wants to make sure that cities are allocating the money that goes to the state for tax purposes.
Correct.
Right? They wanna make sure that they're getting the money, if that makes sense.
Right, so-
They wanna make sure cities aren't using money that should've gone to the council office, if that makes sense.
Right, no, I gotcha.
Do we have any kind of audit that goes through and sees how people are communicating between the different entities to make sure there's no violations or anything happening there through emails, texts, whatever, that we can kinda keep a track of, and keep our si, is there anything that we can follow through, just say, keep track of what's happening through text and through emails? Is there anything that we do with that?
Okay, are you, are you saying-
I, we, you know, last week I was talking, or last year, I was talking about having everybody, the head people of the offices, create a journal, a daily journal, what they did that day, who they talked to, keeping track of their phone calls, keeping track of their texts, emails. Do we have any kind of way of tracking what's happening?
Are you saying in existence right now?
Yes.
Do you not think, councilman, that they're doing journals? I, I have no idea.
I didn't make it a motion to do that, I just think that would be a good idea. I can't make it a motion when we get to the next meeting. I didn't make it a motion to do that. I just think that would be a good idea. I can make a motion when we get to the next meeting. But I would like to have, is there any way to track what's being floated around? If someone sends an email or a text and it doesn't get responded to, and that person gets upset, well, you didn't answer my text. Like she was talking about, she's, as Jennifer was saying, she's sending out emails and no one's responding it. Communications between people, if there's a question on what's happening at that particular, how things are happening. Do we have any way of tracking past emails, past texts, past conversations as far as we can?
You know, Councilman, I don't think there's a way of doing it short of going into our Google Workspace, which is the software that we are using and making those searches. We talked about that last week.
Yep.
In terms of emails, all of those are saved, all of those are backed up, all of those are there, and those emails exist. Councilman Thompson, I will tell you that Jessica did respond to you twice last week. I think your email has some issues, because I've had emails that I've sent you that you haven't gotten either, remember?
So...
And you were like, hey, Cass, you never sent me this, and I was like, here's a copy of the screenshot, because I write Jessica's, both of her emails.
Friday, close of business day, yes, but I sent it on Wednesday. So, and then at Friday, close of business day, she said, and then the reason that she responded is because when I sent my agenda items, I resent the list of items that I needed. And she stated that she could not, I mean, she goes, obviously, I don't have time to send you all this information. And that's why she responded, because I double-sent it, not the first initial send.
I just want to make sure that you did get those responses.
Right.
Because I'm not the only staff member that not, I mean, I've responded to you, but she has as well. Jessica's, I've seen.
Right, no, I think Jessica's doing an outstanding job.
But to answer your question, I, the only way to do that is to have somebody go through on a daily basis, I guess, do a log, see who has responded to an email, who hasn't. We don't have the staff kind of do that, but that is something that we can do. I don't think there's a software program to do that either, and I'm not aware of it. But I would, I would, I'm going to say this again, just felt like making this pitch. If you had rules and procedures of the council, and you put a rule and procedure in there that says that if I sent an email, at least give me an acknowledgement that I received it, or et cetera, that would give there a way to take action on that.
You, it's on you.
No.
No, 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 it's on you. It's the next thing.
Letter view.
I thought you were waiting.
So, okay, so does anybody have anything else on this one?
Other than to get the past audits sent to us, so we can see, we can review those before we go any further.
Yeah, so can we table this?
Yeah.
Okay, I might even go find one now.
So can we table this until the next meeting? So that we can see all that, and if we have to create a scope, then we have time to do that.
Reason I want to, because you said they make recommendations. And if I see two years ago recommendations, I, then you can sit there and say, oh, look, here, they are making these improvements for this regulation. Oh, well, they didn't do anything this, what, why haven't we done anything with these two, with these, with this issue?
Yeah, I'll get them there.
Okay.
All right. Discussion and possible action regarding a training budget for city council members.
You.
You? I thought she said skip you.
No, skip T.
Okay. Review, discuss, and possible action regarding council rules, policies, and procedures.
Yes, so Cass sent us that, it was a scope of all of the things, like a draft. I think that this is something that we definitely need to do. It's just a matter of, can we create a workshop so that we can all sit down and actually have a decent conversation and come up with the rules, policies, and procedures for the city council? It's essentially like our own little handbook. So that way, there's no questions as far as what we can and can't do, and how we manage things, that sort of thing. So I feel like the next step is to have a date to where we can have some sort of workshop so that we can actually create this, and then the next step after that is that we need to implement that. Included in that, I want to, I want to address any kind of biased decisions. I, would that be something that we would need to discuss as far as the public standards and out-of-order testimonies? I mean, would that be something that goes into that manual?
Again, you're discussing, you're saying if a citizen did something in a meeting that...
Well, it's just a justification of when and when not to say out of order, basically.
Okay.
Would that be something that would be a part of that manual?
You can, I guess, achieve. I just, it's hard to define what out of order would be. Like, even if you create a definition of what out of order would be, I think it'd be also confusing.
Well, I mean, there were two different, separate situations that happened in the last meeting, for example. You had employee spouses and friends over here talking almost the whole entire time, never once went out of order. Then you had a concerned citizen over here that actually had something meaningful to say out of order. So that kind of thing is where we need to set boundaries. So are you going to have biased feelings and say out of order on this? You're going to be down the middle, and if you're, that's when you're out of order.
Well, I don't know where you write it.
I think that ties back into your last, where we need an HR person to write that.
For the council one?
Do what?
For the council one?
Yes. Well, for the last one too, but yes. Because there are certain things you can and can't do.
Correct.
According to Robert's Rules of Order. So I still think we're going to have to hire an outside firm to write these correctly.
Now, would the HR professional know the TML rules? So that, that probably wouldn't be...
An HR professional is going to know a lot about federal and state laws in terms of employment. You as elected officials are a different law school.
Right.
There's different HR professionals that deal with cities.
Okay.
Remember that the rules and procedures, what the statute toward authorization is for how you conduct your meetings and the procedures with your meetings. That is, the topics would be agendas, right, how agendas happen. During meetings, what rules are applied. Like Councilman Papito said, we're going to use Robert's Rules. Are we going to use something more relaxed? What are we going to use? It also requires meetings in terms of attendance, inquiry, all those rules of what's required. You can also set the core rules for what you were discussing in terms of the public's involvement in the meetings. You can also set the rules for how to adjourn meetings, all of that. It's, again, meeting-specific. Not necessarily how a council member acts, you know, outside of the council.
Is that where we would set limits if we have a post-meeting and somebody couldn't shown up, show up? So that's when they would get that fine? Is that where that would go?
That's correct. If the council wants to set rules that go above and beyond the state statute for absences and things like that, and defining what an excuse for an absence is, all of that stuff can be included. If you go look at the samples, the seven that I sent you two weeks ago, it includes in there lots of different absences provisions, and they're kind of interesting how others can approach it.
Okay.
I would advise the council, because we don't have anything right now, I would advise not to go too deep in the woods on this and just have very simple, like, even have a goal of just a one-page set of rules that you guys can use as a foundation, and then over time, adding things to it. I think if you get too specific now, you're going to cause yourself a lot of grief.
Okay.
But I would memorialize things that we've been doing in customary practice, like, instead of the state requirement for three minutes for public speakers, we put into our rules and procedures that it's five minutes that the speakers get to talk, things like that. Putting those in there, the skinburns, very likely.
Does anybody feel like we need any action right now, or do you want to switch it to the next meeting as well? To give, give everybody ample time to kind of put their thoughts together.
Let's set a date for the workshop.
Do we want to wait till the first of the year, or do we want this done before the first of the year?
No, we don't want to do it in December.
Okay, so not to exceed January 31st? Is that sufficient?
Yep.
Okay, so I place a motion to create a workshop to create council rules, policies, and procedures at a date or a date to be determined, not to exceed January 31st of 2023.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Motion carries. V. Discussion and possible action regarding a training budget for city council members.
Okay, so I see that Councilman Mike Papenfus has put together some sort of training request estimate. Anybody have any questions on that?
Y'all asked for numbers, so I called the hotel, called TML, called a few different companies, went on the IRS website, and got y'all numbers. So the paper you have in front of you is for the TML Leadership Academy, April 12th through 14th and May 17th through 19th of 2023. It's at the Sheraton-Austin-Georgetown Hotel and Conference Center. The class cost for registration is $795. It's limited to the first 75 participants who register. The hotel for each stay is $361.85. That's Wednesday through Friday, two nights at $159 each, plus taxes and fees. That could go down if we are tax-exempt from some of those fees. The meals and incidentals through the IRS are listed for day one through three. It's broken down into since breakfast and lunch is provided on Thursday. It's $64 minus $14 for breakfast, $16 for lunch, for a total of $34. For Friday, it's $64 minus $14, since breakfast is provided, so that'll be $50. The first day was $64. So the meals and incidentals for days one through three for both sessions would be $296. Mileage, unless a city vehicle is used, then mileage is not calculated. Godly to Georgetown is 147 miles at $86, which is 58.5 cents per mile. Georgetown to Godly, same exact thing. So your class cost is 37 percent. Your hotel is 34 percent. Your meals and incidentals is 14 percent. Your mileage is 16 percent. For a total of $2,158.69.
Is this something that sells out?
Yes, there are already almost out of rooms for that block.
Okay. So when you register for one, do you have to register for both at the same time? Or is it, you register for one and then you have to go back and register for the other one?
So you register for the class, it's just broken up into two different months, and then you have to register the hotel in block one and block two.
And it's on premises?
Yes.
Okay. So like you said the other day, whenever, so it's like, like you said, with the package?
Yes.
Essentially. Okay. If not, I'd like to place a motion.
Make a motion too.
I'll motion we allow all city council employees training opportunities of their choice, not to exceed a total amount of $2,500 per fiscal year.
Seconded, Ted.
All in favor? Motion carries. W. Discuss and possible action regarding gifts.
So I can't really get into this because the person that has all the information is not here. So I guess we will table this one for the next meeting as well.
Discussion and possible action regarding Section 5501.007, public testimony and out-of-order standards.
Yeah, I feel like that's going to be part of the U when we do that workshop, so we can go ahead and mark that one out.
Okay, so let's kind of go up there with you.
Yeah.
Discussion and possible action regarding a pre-city council meeting with city employees and officials.
Yes.
So not an open, so a closed?
Yeah, so Cass had suggested something last meeting where we actually come up and sit down with, like, the city employees and stuff. But I feel like if we all wanted to do that, is it going to break any rules? I mean...
Yes, if you all meet and discuss city issues in your report, absolutely.
Right, so if that's what we wanted to do, then how would we all get that opportunity to do so? We can't take an entire day of a city employee's work.
Well, they said that all council members were available, so that's...
Okay, so then how do...
I thought that the discussion last week was that there was, that that was needed on...
Okay.
Big issues, like you guys said, you wanted to have advanced discussions with staff on really big items that are going to be on the agenda. And you guys also said you wanted more time to know of those big items.
Correct.
So I don't think that's an every-need agenda that...
Right, but there needs to be some sort of process so that we're not obligating these guys to release their whole entire schedule to us, if for some reason there was an occasion where we all did want to sit down and speak with them.
But the only other way to do that would be to have a workshop, and I also advocated for that last, last one, that you guys could come here, instead of coming here at five o'clock, you could come in the afternoon sometime and have a workshop. That's where a lot of the nuts and bolts, a lot of councils do that. The difficulty with that is that five o'clock meetings were too early for you guys to get... I don't know what else to do on that.
Workshops. So if we actually call it a workshop, then that's going to...
It needs to follow all the rules of the community, so...
Okay.
So if we had a workshop at five for the city council members, we would then have a city council meeting at 6:30 for the public. But the public could also come to the workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
But if we have the workshop with the city employees at five, we'll have to pay them overtime?
Not if there's salary.
So it's only salary that you want?
Well, I mean, that's all that attends the meetings.
I think, though, that the whole idea of having the ability to meet with staff was so that you could have a conversation with staff about... If you do that in an open meeting, then it doesn't achieve that goal.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
For instance, the council was very concerned about hiring and termination and things like that, because they said, I didn't know about it. Well, those discussions would have been had with a lot of details, a lot of information, not necessarily with the public's consumption, and I think that's what you're asking for, is to know about all that stuff before the meeting, right?
Yeah, and then if we have documentations that we need, like, for instance, if somebody sends me an Excel, an Excel spreadsheet, I can kind of justify where they're going with certain things, but not everybody's going to do the same work the same way, unless it's part of the policy. So if I need clarification on why somebody did something a certain way, then that's when I would need to reach out and say, hey, can you clarify some things for me? Or show me how you, you came up with this type thing.
Yeah, and a lot of that can be achieved the way you've been doing it so far. Yeah, and a lot of that can be achieved the way you've been doing it so far. When you send it in email and say, "Hey, Cass, what's this about? Explain this," and I respond and give you all the information back to you, that's a great way of communicating without having to take too much staff time, and it's just to email the person and ask them.
Yeah, but sometimes you need that face-to-face.
True, true.
Yeah. Okay, well...
But I, I will tell you that if the council is sensitive to taking up staff time, then it's one of those things where there are gonna be certain issues where it, it takes up staff time, right? There's certain issues that are big time issues they gotta take care of, but... And, and not constantly. I think that's...
So could we accomplish that in the council rules, policies, and procedures?
I think so.
I think we could throw that in there.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. So we're kinda moving, we're kinda moving that in with those other ones up there, right?
Right.
Okay. So, looks like we're a zebra. Actions regarding phones and laptops being assigned to council members.
Yeah, so last week when you were talking about subpoenaing our phones if we need to, I feel like to separate that, you know, the council members at least need to have a phone and an email address and possibly laptops to do their city, city work on. That way, if anything comes about and, and the public wants the records, all we have to do is say, "Here you go, you can have everything that's on there," versus hiring somebody in to take our phones, decipher what can and cannot be taken, and so on.
Well, it's, it wouldn't remove the fact that the council members still could use their personal phones to talk about city business, right?
Right, but...
It would still be subject to the public information that you have on your...
Pretty of the work would be done on the city phone. I mean, minimum, we need to have a, an email address so that if we wanna post our email address, we can post our email address for citizens to contact us versus our personal. And I mean, the same thing with the phone. I, for one, do not like my phone number going out to anybody, and some people have gotten it that I have no idea who it is, and I won't respond. So, I mean, if it's a city phone, then obviously I'm gonna have to answer because it's a city work that's gonna be coming in on it. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just clarifying that specific issue, that it, it doesn't matter if the city unvote or not in terms of the public information laws.
Right, so, I mean...
So are you trying to get at where we do not use personal devices for city communications?
Yeah, that'd be nice, too.
Something we could also roll into that policy.
Right.
But, I mean, we've talked about having computers up here and digital agendas and using Google Drive. I'm all for it.
If the council members look at Google Drive and they get sent...
Hey, you gotta tell me that you're gonna send them all weekend. I figure it is there by Friday.
So I just, I mean, it goes back to the whole, if, I'm not gonna answer my phone if I don't know who's calling, and if somebody's texting me some weird stuff, I'm not gonna answer it either. So if it's a city phone, I'll identify who it is and go about it, but no device.
So what about if we don't get phones, but we do get either like an iPad or a laptop, and they have to, their way to contact council is through email, so that way it creates a paper trail?
No, I one hundred percent agree on the paper trail. I do not like talking on the phone at all.
'Cause I really don't wanna carry around two phones. But you don't have to use the laptop. It's just...
And you don't have to accept one either.
I wouldn't mind us all having our city council, so if somebody has a question out there, you know, tied to the city, an email address, so they can hit, we can do it, that we can go to. Not necessarily tied to a, a personal email address, but one tied just to city, that'd be a good ideal. Is that, is that allowable?
Of course, yes.
Before we buy phones for five people and laptops, I'd like to have a, how much that's gonna cost and what, what we all think about benefit of it?
I think emails is a significant cost to the city.
Right, but... Phones do.
Yeah, that's a big expense, which I don't know if we have a budget.
Do we have a maximum as far as the email capacity that we have, like the addresses? Oh, is it like a, it's a godly E D U, right? Like, not E D U, excuse me. I know, it's been a long day.
So yes, there is a maximum of the amount of space you can have, you just buy more.
Okay.
Or the city would buy more. There's no maximum?
That is...
Well, yeah, but you still have to pay for it. You pay for how many gigabytes and, I mean, you might have an unlimited plan, but that's...
If you think your emails and Jennifer Thompson's emails are gonna cost us a hundred and ten dollars, you're wrong.
Oh, I know that, but as we start...
Your emails, your emails aren't gonna cost us any money.
As we start sending all these documents back and forth, I mean...
Yeah, it's not gonna cost you any money, gee, man. That's not true.
I mean...
I, I, we send lots and lots of emails, guys, every, every month, lots and lots. Lots and lots and lots.
We also pay ten thousand dollars a year for Google.
That's not gonna break the bank, I'm just telling you, it's not gonna break the bank. It's not gonna be an abuse of taxpayer fund, it's gonna be a tremendous amount of money.
Jess...
This is, this is not nineteen ninety-two.
He thought it was nineteen seventy, so... David, last week told me it was nineteen seventy, so I was like, oh, it's nineteen seventy anymore. Yeah, so, but anyhow, can we get, is Jessica the only one that can get the amount of money that it's gonna cost as far as phones and all that good stuff? Is she the only one that has that capability? Or she is, and she'll be back next week?
She'd go price them out. Like, I think iPhones, if you want iPhones, or like, if they're for the base models, I think they're a thousand bucks or something like that.
We don't, we don't need, we don't need fancy, we just need simple, like, get the job done.
You should get us all crooked.
Oh, goodie, no reception. So, okay, I guess...
Again, it's, it's a budgetary question, I don't know if there's budgets to buy everybody an iPad, I don't know if it's there, I don't know, I don't have the answer.
Okay, so can we go ahead and table this till next meeting and, in the meantime, have Jessica put some sort of, like, I can't even talk right now.
Instead of table... Set up with a city email address, period. So that people can talk to us and we can send stuff back and forth to you easily. I'm not sure, do I have to get a new server for that on my phone, or? Okay.
I'll set up that one for you.
Well, I have, I have several on it now, I didn't know if I had to do one for that, too.
You just, on your account section, you just have it, and then you're got it.
I make a motion we set that up for the council members so people can, we can communicate, we can't communicate with each other, but people can communicate with us. Or we're gonna end up breaking some kind of, of record law by do, by having that, I don't know.
No, city council members can have email addresses for the cities, that's not my line of...
Okay. I make a motion we set that, the city sets that up for us.
Is your motion gonna have to deal something with phones and laptops being assigned?
Nope, it has nothing to do with the phones and laptops, just an email address, so information from people that wanna give us the information, and then it feels something's going through the administrations or some, hey, this people, the, the city council might find this information useful, they can send it to us instead of going to a separate account or whatever, so they can go to everybody. It just corresponds between the public and the city itself.
I say that because it's an action item on phones and laptops, so...
And then we put it on next week's agenda, next month's agenda, whatever.
Did you say next week?
Well, I said next month, after that.
Oh, we, we have another one this month.
It's been a very long one.
No, no.
No, next week.
No, next month or whenever we have our next scheduled treaty council meeting.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
If it's illegal, I will. I mean, I don't mind, I like that motion, but am I doing something out of order?
I'll make a motion to direct city staff to go to the by-board and other resources to find out pricing on phones and laptops for each council member, and direct staff to provide email addresses for each council member.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. To abstain?
No, four.
Four, four, one abstain?
Okay, so four with our...
Opposed? Abstain?
No, no problem.
Yeah, it looks like we're going back to executive session, right?
I'm going to exit restroom, all right? So are we gonna recess and then come back, explain why we're going into executive session, and then go back there, or? I know I need to use the restroom.
Okay. Yeah, we'll recess and then we'll go into executive session. Because we've got items...
We'll have to come back and say why we're going into executive session.
Well, let's just say it now, we have items that we need to be discussed that are required to be in executive session.
So we're going into executive session after our five-minute recess for personnel matters?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're not gonna speak? You're not gonna speak? I had to put, I had to put my ear, uh, hearing aids in, so I guess you need to get some... We're through. Well, actually, we're going into an executive session. Do you know who that was?
Well, we have to come back from recess and then announce that we're going into executive session.
Yeah, I can't answer anything, I'm sorry.
Don't do that, you're on camera. Need a new backpack for all my binders. Need a new backpack for all my binders.
Oh, are you just sitting tonight? Okay, I was looking at my books after recording.
I'm sorry.
I would entertain a motion to...
I would entertain a motion to...
Make a motion to go back into open session at this time.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, I thought you was gonna bring up the resignation.
Do what? Oh! Do I need to announce that? I guess I do.
Yeah.
I'm sad to say that today we received written resignation from the city administrator, David Wallace, due to health issues and other stuff that's going on. So we're without a city administrator. We will begin searching for a replacement.
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. We're adjourned.
Where's your shirt?